God.
You're the accused and we're the accused. I just got a spotlight.
Yeah.
That letter underneath it.
Do you tell?
It's unnumbered.
Well, we don't think it's come down, but you never know.
It's gonna miss me if it comes now. So, okay, take my mask off.
Sure. That's about six feet.
Okay. Yeah, I'm like, we'll evacuate it. Yay.
So, does anybody or everybody know this writer?
I don't know.
I'm Jessica Walker.
It's nice to meet you.
I'm Wendy.
We've met years ago, years ago. Yes. It's good to see you again.
I'm Tim. We know each other.
We do.
Judy very well. And we just met.
Yes. Yeah.
Well, thank you for your interest in this sport. It's, we just have a few questions.
Sure.
Say as much or as little as you feel comfortable with.
Okay.
You know, not a big deal, just relax.
Okay, sounds good.
Been a long time since you had a job.
No, this is terrifying.
A free job, and I'm like, this is unpaid, you know that. Yeah. She gets unwalked out. And I know that one.
Just okay. Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, very little that I do in life right now is dictated by money, so.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah, I'm lucky.
Well, so, so we can kind of have a set set of questions. You know, spend as little or as much time as you want. So, first question is, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the Main Street Advisory.
Okay, I have been in Temple since ninety-three. I'm a chair with my husband and my children. He was a physician at Scott White, he's now deceased. And I have a bachelor's and master's in violin performance from the University of Texas. I am the original.
Whittle and I are horns, so we appreciate that.
Very good, yes.
Move on to the next interview.
I am the original board with Tom Farrelly and the deceased Clyde Goodnight for the Temple Symphony. I was the first president of the Temple Symphony. And then I, you know, taught basically to violin my whole life. In about two thousand and five, I started Academy Music, which was housed at Temple College. And at that point, it was a priest college division. Judy and I know each other from the mariachi group that we started there. When my husband was very ill, I stepped down from running the Academy Music and my assistant became the president. After my husband passed away, I came back and became her assistant, which is good because she's fifteen years younger than I am. So, I'm gonna let her view with all of that. But I'm still the director of strings. If we ever meet again, I still play the Temple Symphony. Obviously, this year, we've been not working. Anyhow, then about three years, about two and a half years ago, Temple College came to us because the Academy Music had gotten so large. We had about two hundred and eighty-five students at that point. And that was when their music department was expanding to be a four-year department. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, but the, yeah, the music department there is four-year now. And so, they said, we really need you to look for another place to go. So, at that point, you know, we were a little bit shocked and not sure what we were gonna do. And then found out that Christ of Jesus Church had closed down. And so, we entered negotiations with the diocese and the diocesan church. And that summer, which would be two years ago this summer, we do our program downtown. And so, we are our own entity there. It's been wonderful. We love it. So, here, you know, we were looking for a home. And in fact, I met, met with Tim right when that happened, because, you know, we were just, we had no idea what we wanted to do. Being nonprofit and, you know, not having a whole lot of money. And so, we didn't realize that we were moving into a downtown community. And it was so exciting because here we were feeling like we were like the evil stepchildren who were pushed out of the house, you know? And, and all of a sudden, in downtown, they were going, oh, my gosh, this is so wonderful that you're here. You know, we brought concerts, you know, we had a group of, of kind of strolling strings that we would bring out on First Fridays and kind of play at different restaurants and, and, and then, of course, COVID hit and the world shut down. But we've been able to keep going. We have not been doing any kind of live ensemble things, but we've been able to keep our teaching going. And as of this summer, we are going over musical theater camps, which are at the CAC. We're going to have a hybrid string camp because now Christ of Jesus Church is having live services because we need their facilities for doing anything larger than what we can do. So, we're, you know, we're gradually kind of reentering the world as, you know, most of you are as well. So, my interest obviously is education, music education, children, the arts. I, Monday morning, I was at the Main Street meeting, which I have not been at since COVID hit. And I was talking to Teresa Anderson. Are you guys, do you guys know Teresa?
I do.
She's a marketing person with, and, and she got put aside, which she might be, because she said that they, before COVID, she said they had identified seven areas of marketing, basically, of bringing people to the city and, and things to address. And she said the one thing that never got done was arts and culture out of those seven. And she said, then I have to talk, you know, because, and, and of course, with the Arcadia getting renovated and just presenting different opportunities, because right now, we have very few performance venues. You know, like I said, we do our musical theater at, at the CAC. We do our kind of bigger concerts in the parish hall, which is gorgeous, at Christ Episcopal Church. But, you know, there's no downtown venue really, other than the churches. So, I, I'd love to see, you know, having been here since ninety-three. I moved here from a town in northern Alabama that had this absolutely beautiful downtown that was very vibrant. It had lots of arts, arts events, and they had a big jazz festival every spring. And, you know, downtown Temple was not vibrant at that point. And, you know, we, in two thousand and one, we moved out into the country to a ranch, which Tim has a place across the street from me. And so, you know, at that point, you know, you're, you're kind of getting your little whirl. You know, I was going to Temple College, my husband was going to Scott White. And I really wasn't too aware of what was going on downtown until we made this move. And, you know, and I think anybody that has come under the influence of Dan Keller, you know, it's like, I mean, what a godson. He's great.
He really is.
He's great. I mean, even like when we would have a concert, he goes, oh, give me your posters. I'm walking around to the different businesses, I'd be happy to put them up. You know, it's like he's, he's so hands-on with everything that's going on downtown. He was the one who suggested, he said, this might be something that, you know, you might be able to contribute to. It might be good for you, why don't you apply for it? So, here I am. Okay. Is that too much information, Tim?
No, no, actually, no, I was letting you go. The second question is, what skills, talents, or experience would you bring to the position?
Okay. Nothing, nothing other than that. I still have energy at my old age and I still do violin, so that's, yeah.
Very good.
Okay.
Very good. So, the third question, there's only four of them.
Okay.
And the third question is, as a board member, what, what do you think that you would like to accomplish?
Um, like I said, I'm, I'm really interested in having performance venues downtown and just seeing a little bit more. I, I know that you've developed like visual arts downtown, it has become, but there's, and there's a lot as far as just kind of having concert things with rock and, and country and mariachi, but there's not been too much classical, like any.
Almost none.
Yeah.
Zero.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we, you know, our presence has probably been the only classical music that you've been having going on downtown. And that's obviously very recent.
That would bring in a different audience.
Exactly, exactly, exactly.
Also.
Yeah, a different audience, yeah.
Which is really good because the symphony has proven that there is a wider audience for classical music here. It's been very, very important.
Exactly, and the thing is, if you develop an arts community, you know, they come out for these things. And a lot of times, the people who come out for those things also have money. And.
I wouldn't go say that, but thank you.
We always like money. Well, you know, money does support a lot of things, so, yeah.
Very good. Council, do you all have any questions in particular that's kind of struck you from this writer?
No, I just really like, but you can bring it to downtown, bring it along.
This is not a question, but it's a comment. One of my major concerns with developing more down sound downtown performance venues is pulling away from the CAC and the Mary Alice Marshall Performing Arts Center. You're not using that at all.
No, 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 no.
College.
Well, we aren't for the academy.
Okay.
We aren't for the academy. But, you know, it's, it's interesting because I was actually in this conversation with Teresa Anderson yesterday. Is that when we started the symphony, there was, there was some blowback in the community. And, you know, it was like, you know, it's like they were trying, somebody thought, I don't, we don't know where it came from. You know, and so, I'm not even going to try to, try to guess that. But it was like, if we started the symphony, then it would pull away from the CAC.
Absolutely, I'm, it's the South versus the.
Right, exactly, exactly. And, and it's like I said, you develop an arts community and people come, you know, and it's like they don't distinguish whether the concert is at UMHB in their new performance hall, which is beautiful. It's not large, but it's beautiful.
It is beautiful.
Or Temple College or the CAC. You know, the CAC is small. And so, is, and when they redid the seats, they took away seats.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, and really, it's the same thing with, with UMHB. Their hall is not large. You know, Temple College is, is the largest one.
Yes, it is now.
But, you know, when we're trying to draw people downtown, you know, it's not like there are so many concerts at Temple College. There's so many concerts at the CAC and so many at UMHB that somebody, it's rare that somebody's going to have those shows.
I'm glad we had this conversation because it's always something that sort of bothered me.
Right.
But this, that's good, and I'm glad you, you think about it and the catering and downtown Main Street community thinks about it also.
Right, well, absolutely. But like I said, this came up when we started the symphony.
Okay.
The CAC.
Yes, I remember that.
The CAC still is here. The symphony is still here, you know? And so, I, I think that, you know, nobody would even question that the larger symphony.
Okay, good.
And don't we want to think more possible?
We certainly, that's, that's part of the focus of Main Street.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, in fact, one thing that I was, was mentioned, they were talking about the possibility of having a billboard on the highway and directing people to downtown. And I said, you know, I don't, they were so, I don't know if it's worth it. I said, you know, when you're driving, like if I am on a road trip, whatever happens again, on a road trip, and you're looking for a place to get dinner, and you don't know if a downtown is ten miles away or a mile and a half away. If you see something that downtown is a mile and a half away with a bunch of restaurants, you're more apt to turn off there and go and find something that is not a fast food chain.
Yeah, that is fast food McDonald's.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That was one of the things, Susan, that we talked about. We had dinner, we had an app with that Hunden Group that they brought there before they had the conference. That's a neighbor, and that's one thing we talked about is multiple venues and multiple types of performance.
Good.
So, yeah, they were all, they were all for that. So, Lois, do you have anything for us? Do you have any questions for us in particular?
I don't, I, I mean, I don't, to be perfectly honest, I don't know that much about the board, how often it meets, you know, that, when it meets. I'm hoping it's not between three and six in the afternoon. We just looked, so it's the fourth Friday at ninety.
That's, that's the guest of the evening, let's not say.
Right, right, right. It just doesn't hit into my teachings at any time, so it's fine.
Okay. Okay. Well, very good. I definitely think you bring a unique skill and aspect to this board. But I think we, I think we all appreciate very much applying and being willing to serve.
Thank you.
Always a lot, so, thank you for that.
And to get to this process, this is the first time we've done this as well.
You're literally the first interview in ninety-one. One down, ninety to go.
Okay.
Yeah, you got a competition stiff, Lois.
Well, they, they cover all the boards.
Well, they say you should be first or last, right?
That's right.
Yeah. It's like I told, I tell my students, it's like, if you're gonna make a mistake in the middle of the piece, you have a great start, you have a great end. I think they won't notice something that happens.
Forget it by the end when it's a great end.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Well, thank you guys for having me. Thank you.
Good to meet you.
My very pleasure. Bye-bye.
Hi. How are you?
I'm good.
We know you.
Yo, I do know you. I do know you.
You can de-mask if you're coming.
All right, we're spaced, so I feel comfortable.
So, we're, we're actually gonna try to stay on time, so we're gonna skip to Pleasant Street. We know you, we love you, but we're gonna keep it moving.
That sounds great.
All right, so, so we have, there's basically four questions, and the fourth one is, do you have any questions for us? So, so you basically have three questions. The first one is, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on this sport.
And so, personally, we have lived in Temple for, I think we're going to twenty-one years now. And military is what brought us to this area. And when we had the choice of where to settle, we chose Temple. And my husband's position was changed. He's not with the military anymore, but he is affiliated with the military through contracting. And I was able to get connected with Temple ISP. And so, for career reasons, we chose to stay here and make this our home. We, I would love to say we've raised a wonderful daughter, but I don't think we've finished raising her, and I don't think it ever happens. She is wonderful, but she isn't raised fully yet. Who is, is her.
She is almost paid for.
She is, oh, well, we're in the really heat of the tuition, kind of called tuition stuff, so it doesn't feel that way. I'm sure we'll be, I'm sure we will get there. And that she is completing her, in her second semester at Texas A&amp;M.
She's a good babysitter for my granddaughter.
She, she is, Amelia is her precious, her pride and joy. She loves Amelia. And, you know, this is where we chose to make our home. We did have opportunities to leave for different reasons, and we chose to stay here because we love Temple. We love what it stands for. And we, all of, we, we lived in an apartment when we first moved to Temple for about nine months. And then we bought our first house on the north side, and then we bought our forever home on the north side about fifteen years ago. And so, this area is very, very dear to us personally. We've watched a lot of things grow and change over time and are looking forward to continue to watch those things and progress happen.
Very good. What, what can you bring to the board? What skills, talent, or experience?
Sure, so, really, my reason for doing this and applying is personal. And because I feel as, as someone who supports and appreciates as a citizen, Temple very much. But I think that my work life helps me to understand how the board process works. Not only with you guys, as far as the council and city staff and their role, and then what the board's role for the downtown advisory group, really being an advisory role. And so, I think because of my work experience, I have a unique perspective in how those things work together. I have been on this committee, I think initially it was a committee, I don't think initially it was a board, with, for downtown since it began. And it has been neat to watch how it's developed. Initially, it was really just grassroots and just a group of people that were coming together because they cared about downtown and they wanted to see our area continue to thrive. And over time, with the Main Street application and becoming a Main Street town, seeing the way that that has morphed. Initially, I felt like our, our board or our committee just gave a lot of ideas. It was kind of a one-way push. This is what we'd love to see, this is what we'd love to see. And then a lot of times, the city would be, oh, wait, no, we can't do that because there were reasons and things that we wouldn't have known that we, why that would work. In the last year and a half, maybe a year, with city staff becoming very involved in our board, and I've seen a real change in that. And really, what I would love to see, which is a two-way street to the city, has brought a lot of plans and developments and ideas to us to get feedback as stakeholders. And then vice versa, we've continued to generate ideas. Any good board needs to be able to do that. But with the city staff as involved as they have been, it's allowed us to change gears more quickly as opposed to us getting far down the road in a plan or something that we had in our minds. The city cap staff could say, oh, wait, no, we can't do that, because there's this ordinance or this, or this ties with something that we're dealing with an overall project. So, it's given us more context to where I think we've been able to be much more focused. And what, what I can bring hopefully is that experience, having seen that progression and then really hoping to keep us focused moving forward. Because I do think that there is a lot of momentum and energy now.
Probably the city has attended those meetings. I'm sure Dan does.
Yes, Dan, absolutely. He's there all the time. We have had a communications department staff here and there visit. We have had planning and zoning, Brian has been there really faithfully this last year. And, and he's key in allowing and, and helping guide some of those discussions. Because, yes, they're only ideas, but at the same time, he helps us kind of find context for how that can move them. We have had in the last year representatives from both police department and fire department. Fire department, not every meeting, but I would say about eighty percent, we had the police department there as a spokesperson speaking about some of the safety initiatives and hearing some of the concerns. So, there, there have been a lot. Several other people from Brian's office have also attended, but mainly his department and communications, I would say, are the two.
Okay, very good. Anything else on the skills, talent, and experience?
I think the other piece that might, might, that I might share is I, I do have a unique perspective in that, in my current work capacity. I kind of am able to see some bigger picture things. And I can see the way that, you know, it's all a web and everything all fits together in multiple ways. And so, having some of that insight, I think, maybe may allow for some conversations and to help guide some conversations and some plans. And plan development is something that I have, have done well throughout my career. So, as we begin to talk about different plans, sometimes people, other people on our committee haven't worked at that level or haven't worked. They've worked at an ideal level and maybe a smaller level, but not what it looks like for something to be implemented larger scale. So, I think bringing some of that experience would be helpful as well.
Very good. Third question is, what would you like to accomplish as a board member?
So, the, the goal of the Temple Main Street program is really to make downtown Temple vital and grow it and make it a vital part of Temple as a whole. And that's really where I want to see us go. This, none of this happens overnight. It is a very long process, as all of you are very aware, because it's been something that I know has been important at the city of Temple for a long time. But what I hope to see is that we can see the, the fruits of that labor start to take place. That we are able to help implement ideas that really move us forward so that we don't have to go to Georgetown or we don't have to go to wherever, Denton, I was there recently, in there downtown. That we can have those experiences right here in Temple, Texas. And I, I believe that we're, we're ready. All the different pieces and parts are pointing in that direction to really make Temple a destination and where people wanna come, they wanna stay and enjoy. And, and again, for us, because this is our home, we want our home to be the very best place it can be. And there's so much potential and, and people downtown, especially as we've worked and gotten to know those vendors and, and business owners, you know, over the last twenty years, you know, their, their heart is, is all about Temple. And, and we just want to make sure that we are helping to make decisions that grow their businesses, that support them as business owners. And then that can really help Temple as a whole become that destination and not just, not just a, a place to, to live, but a destination for others to enjoy as well.
Counselors, anybody have any specific questions from this part? Comforted very well. Do you have any questions for, I'm sorry, Judy?
Very, very, her heart tried into it.
Well, and that's always a concern I have because, and you guys know, in your position, I don't, it's tricky if people see you when you've been in a district for a long, a long time, where you've been out there, they think, oh, that's a district responsibility or that's a school responsibility. And that's not really, that's not really what this is. I did ask permission because I know it will, will require meeting with some time away from work. But this is, this is really bigger than that. And like I said, we, we chose here twenty-one years ago, and we continue, continue to choose here. And we do, you know, this place is very important to us, where we raised our daughter. And we just love Temple, and, and that's what we're all about. So, my, I say we because my husband's all in too, which is, which is also important to have this support, so.
Any questions for us?
I don't think so. I, I think the, the main thing that I'm excited about is for this to be really seen as a city board now, that, that it's taken that next step because it does, I think, change the conversations. I think it changes the communication flow. I think it changes a lot of those things, having it deemed as an official city board. And so, I'm excited to see where we go. And like I said, I, I feel like the last year, all of that foundation has, has been laid. And, and I know officially, we are a city board already. But as we reauthorize and as we reapply for our positions to really see it from the very beginning in that way, I think we'll be, we'll be key in moving it forward. So, I appreciate the opportunity to, to be here and, and, and wanted to serve however you see fit.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Ms. Sparks, the estimated time for the, or the sort of slotted time that you're thinking is the fourth Friday of every month through this?
But it has been, and, and that is fine except during a legislative session because we have legislative calls every Friday with Hugh Shine. But, but typically, I'm able to do that and then jump on after. So, so typically, that works well, and then, and I just talked, spoke. And then, and I just talked, spoke with Dan that he knows that I have to do that initial call. And then afterwards, I'm able to jump on. So every other year, it will be a little bit of an issue during legislative session, but.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank, thank goodness is right. That's an understatement. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sir, are you new to Temple?
Yeah, I'm new, yeah.
You know anything about downtown?
Just moved here yesterday. Just give me some. No, nothing about downtown.
Yeah, nothing, nothing. So it's pretty simple. We, we, there's four questions. And the last one is, do you have any questions for us? So we'll leave these pretty quick.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm almost embarrassed asking this, but tell us about yourself and why you're interested in serving.
All right, well, Patrick, partner in Casper Patrick and Associates. We, as many of you know, or all of you know, we, we own a building and operate a business downtown Temple. It used to be at, at Central in Maine. Now we've, we've moved a whole block to Adams in Maine.
How do you like the new building?
We love it. So, yeah. More, more space. So, you know, the great news is we ran out of space in the old building, which was a pretty decent sized building. But that's, that's good for us and for Temple. So now we can bring more young professionals in to be downtown, to do things downtown, to be a part of Temple. So that, that's really exciting, not only for us, but hopefully for the city as well. And we love being downtown. We're super excited about everything that's going on down there and happy that we're involved with it. That's, that's been the most fun for me. I'm the one who's doing most of that. So it's, it's been fun to see it grow, but not to see it grow in a vacuum. You know, it, downside for me on that is that since I see it almost daily, you know, I don't get to see the pop. I, I, I see that, you know, whole internal growth. And then, and you're really excited about it. It was really fun to see other people who aren't into the weeds every day. And they see like Santa Fe Plaza, for example, go from what everybody remembers it to be to what it is today. And so, yeah, I'm very excited to be where we are downtown and couldn't, couldn't be happier with the new building. Surprisingly, you know, Rick and I bought that, we said, we're done. You know, this is less for us, you know, the younger partners, okay, they're going to have to do something, but we're done. And we were meeting the other day, like. And that's a good thing. So.
Okay, good. Again, sort of embarrassed. What skills, talents or experience can you bring to the position?
Well, I think in all of these, especially the Main Street Board, it's, it's good to have an engineer on that board. I mean, bankers are, you know, there's certain groups you always see that you people can put on boards. And, you know, engineers and bankers seem to be one of those groups that always get put on there just because of a skill set I think they bring. So I think that's always good to have on these, and especially this. For me, personally, for the Main Street Board, you know, I've been on the committee since it was Jonathan started, two, five more down. And so then that transitioned into the Main Street Advisory Committee, which I've been on that since that inception. And so now that you guys are turned into a board, wanted to continue the work that we've started to do on that. But specifically, you know, a lot of experience, obviously downtown, a lot of experience with projects. All of the stuff, Santa Fe Plaza, the Santa Fe Market Trail, First Street, you know, the festival grounds, about to revitalize two buildings down there. Of course, we've done things that haven't happened yet, like downtown city center, the two garages, but that are in progress. First Street, which I'm super excited about, that, that is, you know, again, it's another really fun thing when you're in the weeds to watch it go along, but then you see it get populated. And to see, you know, trailer right now, if you guys have been down there, nothing, you know, it's packed. And I, I think a lot of that's due to you guys letting those projects go, go out. And the fact, and, and one of the things that, you know, I also did downtown master plan. So I kind of know everything that's planned to go on downtown. But I think one of the greatest things that's happened, not only just the amenities that we put in there, but you, you've turned it into a desirable walking space for downtown. Pedestrian facilities got much larger, the lighting is vastly improved. You know, I'm, I'm one of those guys that, so I always tell people, most y'all probably heard this. The great thing about Rick and I is I'm a morning guy and he's an afternoon guy. So I'm, I'm at the office stupid early and just blowing and going. And, you know, he's, he, he takes him a little while to get revved up. But he's still, you know, six o'clock, he's still rolling strong or I'm starting to fade. Of course, I've had my twelve hours in by then. But it's really awesome to see the, just how downtown knows. And I think that gives everybody a really safe environment. And I'm, I'm super excited with those new parking garages. I think it's going to be needed. Because the other thing I think that's going to happen sooner rather than later. You know, I always tell people, when I first got to what was then RPK, KPA, first thing they told me is go to Georgetown, you know, they, you know, okay. And so I saw them do their downtown, which was worse than what, what we had before, what we started doing. It took them twenty-five years to get there. It's not going to take us twenty-five years. I think you're going to start seeing these buildings populate. It's just going to be too valuable of an asset. Especially with what we have going at City Center. You start putting residents downtown, which every other municipality that we work in, nobody has that. Not to that level. You may have a couple of, you know, people that own buildings and they, they put themselves residential space up top, but not true, true population downtown. When you get that, that, I mean, that's people spending money, people shopping, people wanting to do stuff. I think all those buildings are just going to explode. I'm, so I'm super excited to see that happen. Not, not only for downtown Temple, but as property owner downtown, you know, you're using what you have to do as well. Y'all, y'all still property owners in downtown Georgetown or, or near downtown? We're, we're on the square in Georgetown.
Right, that's great.
There was a very nice looking office. And so that's the other thing that, that we had to be a little bit strategic about, which I hope, hope, and I really believe is going to change too. Years ago, we go recruit new engineers. It was difficult to get them to come to Temple. And so that's one of the reasons we put an office in, in Georgetown. Although, you know, we're doing work in that area, sure. But it's pretty easy to recruit them to go downtown. They love being here also. I think we're going to get to that. And really, I think what City Center is going to see, and it's probably a lot of those young professionals that are working in the downtown area that, you know, they don't, they just want to walk to everything, every service that they have to their business, to where they can, their entertainment, their restaurants, all that stuff. So I think we're getting to that point where we can start selling this. But it, it was a struggle for us really to say, you know, they go, your office is where? Downtown Temple. Okay. But Austin Market allowed us to recruit those guys. Now, what's really weird is, you know, any of y'all with, with young children probably have experienced this too. Once they get past that mid twenties, the late twenties, it seems to be going a little longer these days. You know, the younger, young guys aren't having kids. You know, like me, you know, twenty-two years old, they're waiting until their thirties. But once they start establishing that, now they want to come here. You know, but I think we're about to get to that point where you're getting both sides of that.
Their definition of quality of life changes.
It does. It's, it's not, I want to go to Sixth Street anymore. You know, I want to go have a nice meal that's a little more quiet, you know.
Kid-friendly.
Not sit in traffic.
Not sit in traffic. Yeah, all those things.
That's interesting.
Did that answer the question I'm trying?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. Um, I think you really, I think you probably answered what you want to accomplish as a board member also in all of that. You have any particular questions for us?
No. I mean, you know, I, I know all you guys really well. So and I get to talk to you all quite a bit. So no, no, no questions about the Main Street. I'm assuming, well, let me, I do have one question, which I asked this question before I even re-applied. So in, in, I ask city staff, but you know, one of, one of my concerns was that because we do so much work downtown, was this board going to be something that was going to be recommending specific projects and design projects to council? Because I know I have to, you know, either get off the board or recuse myself from everything. The response I was given was no, that, that, that wasn't going to be the purpose of this board. So that is a question. Do y'all see that as the purpose of this board?
You know, I really, I think one of the reasons why we're going through this board and commission process is there were a lot of boards that they thought that their main job was to push stuff up to council. Those are the active boards. The inactive board weren't doing anything. They were just sort of swimming in the surf. And so the, the purpose of kind of the three constitution of boards and commissions is to begin to, with executive staff and council, begin to push projects and ideas into the boards. So that the boards are ultimately an arm of the council and staff to accomplish our strategic vision. Yeah. So. And so I have a question for you. It's, so as a board member, and as, as those candidates are being pushed down, do you see that, because chances are y'all, you're, you're going to end up working on a lot of those, those projects anyway. Do you see a need to have an engineer sitting on that board as things are just beginning to be born? These ideas are just starting? Or really, is that something that you think the board should flesh out? With, obviously with council's help and then ultimately land on your desk as a project? Does that, does that question make sense?
Yeah, it does. So I think that it should be something that, that is flushed out and then lands on our desk rather than you just have an engineer sit on the board. I, I think, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea to have an engineer sit on the board, just, you know, and they, they like me on there because I can also give them updates and presentations on all the stuff that we're doing downtown. And so as a matter of fact, you know, Dan asked me a day, if you get selected, would you, would you mind, you know, giving me that, giving us an update on everything going on downtown? Where you are, what's coming next, timeframes, all of those things. And I think they like seeing all that.
But you would do that anyway.
I would, yeah. Well, you said, well, if you don't get selected, were you still doing it? I said, absolutely.
Yeah.
Because all I can do is, you know, I just have to walk across the street.
Right.
I don't see any problem with you having to recuse yourself if that occurred. I mean, we, we have to recuse ourselves from time to time. It's just not an issue. We're not a huge community, community. And the expertise and ideas and history you bring are, and location you bring are really important.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I don't see this, I see this board as being that advisory board and it's pushing things up to council. But, you know, they don't, it's not like they're RZ, who has a massive budget. You know, they, they've got a pot of money to do things with. So I, I thought this would be more as an idea board that gets pushed up to, to council so that you guys can make decisions and, and consider things rather than a board that is, you know, pushing design projects out and contracts. With the RZ, I don't see this board pushing design projects so much. That's already been proven, right? But I do see it pushing more programming to attract people to downtown and take advantage of the things that are being done. Because in case you see at a point in time, downtown is going to be, and the private sector is going to come in and finish. And it changes the whole dynamics of an engineering firm, an architectural firm being on this board. Because they just were programming kind of approach. That's how I look at it.
Right. You know, I agree with you on that. We're, we're in the process of doing the downtown. It's called downtown neighborhood planning district right now, but it's really just a downtown district. And, and my vision for that is, because there's, there's not, if you look at the boundary, there's not a ton of residents. And if there are some, and we have brought those people in, they're a part of the focus group. But to me, the whole point of that is making downtown chief destination. And, you know, and how I, when staff is asking me about that, I said, you know, what I want to see is, and not all the time, some of them all the time, but that, you know, and I know you do it anyway, but somebody like Wyndham or John Keeler or Bob Rider, they, they go ahead and drive past Beer's place and keep heading to downtown. Because that is, is such a destination, that's where they want to go. And I think we're getting there. I know that we had one focus group on that and they said, parking keeps coming up. And, you know, my response to that has always been, you know, when, when you make, and it's in the pre-land, and if you guys had a blank check, you can do it tomorrow, but you don't. And that's what I tell people too. Yeah, it'd be done, right? But we don't have a blank check. We don't have all of them in the world. If I go over my fifteen minutes, just kick me out. But if you go walk down First Street right now, you know, the pedestrian facilities are enhanced. It's very well lit up. It looks pretty. It's someplace you want to walk. When you, I think when you do that all of downtown, people are going to want to park their car and just walk. You know, now it's, you know, two weeks ago and it's two degrees and rain and whatever. Okay, no. They don't want to dump any either. Do what? Those people were walking into the lane.
That's right. That's, yeah. But if you, I think if you get to that, when we, not, not yet, when we get to that point, I think people are going to be super happy to park in one of those garages and just explore all of downtown on foot, because it's such a nice walking space and it, you know, looks, it looks great. And if it's an evening or, you know, where it's well lit, they feel safe. And so I think the parking question is probably somewhat go away. I didn't know completely go away. But I think it somewhat goes away just because they're happy to go walk and explore.
Yeah.
A little bit off the topic. But the, that extra co-parking garage, how many spaces does that estimate?
Two thirty-five.
And then the, the Hawn?
Four fifteen.
Okay. We're talking about six hundred and fifty space?
Right.
Downtown.
And, and that's quite a bit.
If you figure three people a car.
Yeah.
Right. Two or three people a car.
Ton of people. And you still have your other, other spaces off three downtown.
Yeah. There's going to be ample parking at least for a while.
Correct. And if you think about even Santa Fe Plaza, how many are over there? And for weekend traffic, you know, that's, and that's a nice walk.
Yeah. Oh, yes, absolutely. One of the best parties of the five years, let's say, was the opening of Santa, testing of the fountains.
Yes.
It was such a nice.
It was.
You all did, did, did that party. It was great.
Yeah. And so I mean, that's, I'm excited to, I guess we officially opened up yesterday officially. So I'm excited for, you know, us to get back to the point where that can be an event center.
Yes.
You know, that was, that was the saddest thing about COVID is, you know, we had the first few things weren't quite done yet. And, and the first events that we had out there were so, you know, so fun, so well attended, then we just had to shut it down. events that we had out there were so, you know, so fun, so well attended, then we just had to shut it down. We decided to see that open back up and 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 that'll bring, so, you know, I think that'll bring a lot of of, uh, retail to downtown patrons, but I've also heard from several, you know, like Bruce Baseball, he said, Crossroads, we don't have a tournament out there, their place goes nuts. So that's good to hear.
That is great.
Yeah, yeah.
It really is. Well, I hope that when, as Wendell said, downtown is finished, what I'm told, that we all are still alive and and participating, that we move east and the Main Street Committee would be very involved with, or board would be very involved with ideas how we go, how you affect east, because east is, is, there's a lot to do that could be done and will be affected by this.
Yeah, and you know, you know, BJ's got, they have their brewery out there, and of course, they're open limited. But and I'm sure all of y'all toured this, but when we were doing the downtown master plan, what I thought were the coolest buildings that we had was, was the depot, you know, by fourteen.
And Hunnun mentioned that too.
Do you want to?
Hunnun mentioned that also.
Yeah, that is a truly cool building.
Yeah, I should have noticed.
Possibilities.
City owns it, yeah.
You gotta get it for storage now.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, but if you haven't been there, you get a chance, it's, you know, we did it, you know, it was back in fourteen, but that thing is just a cool building.
Yeah, I've not been in.
The things that can be done, the ideas.
Yeah, yeah, so I, but that helps you kind of move in.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It does. Okay.
A quick question off topic again. We were looking at lighting, uh, the depot last night, and we're keeping it in the limbo. Is the depot part of the master lighting plant on top of the building?
It is.
Okay, I knew the other two were, you questioned it.
As a matter of fact, so we.
It's not a flat roof.
Right, we've been pushing that real hard, um, and of course, we can do that by board, so it'll go fast. And we've already got everything rolling, um, but he's, uh, that group is coming to do a sample of buildings so they can finalize their stuff by board and that purchasing can go out and get the contract done. But that's one of the buildings they're going to get on top of moving this back.
Okay.
So we'll have all three, so.
Good.
You know, G I C admin building, um, the Santa Fe Business Center and the depot all of them.
Couple of weeks ago, I drove through, uh, Hamilton, I think it was Hamilton, for sure it was, about nine o'clock at night. You know, they have that pretty little square that you go through, like if you're heading down toward Avonlea, and they've done that. Down there, all those buildings around the square are lit up, and it's it's just beautiful.
Yeah, it it makes a big difference.
It does.
It's very warm, it's inviting.
Yes, invited, that's the word, yes.
We're going to be LED, new technology, all kinds of stuff like that. Georgetown is pretty old, you know, almost a big Christmas light bulb type thing. Uh, downtown Brian just did it, and they use the same group that that we're going to use. So they've done a lot of of downtown areas with that, but yeah, but we're going to get, so Brian, they just came out with new technology for the LEDs. So I think I think you'll be super excited when that comes.
Just remembering when we put them in, they'll come out with new technology.
It's funny. You just gotta gotta go with what you can with.
All right, anything else for Mr. Casper?
I do that half the time. It's okay. Well, I don't know why. We're, we're almost won.
Yeah, Casper Patrick, you just roll off the dust. I'm sorry. I'll call Rick Patrick, so there you go.
Do that. He'll be okay with it.
Anything else?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thanks for being downtown. Thanks for keeping your second building downtown. That was really important.
It was important for us. So we were, we're excited when that thing came available. We did not, we weren't leaving downtown. We were just trying to figure out how to, we were out, we were out of space, so.
Well, we're glad to hear you think maybe you're out of space again, and you can expand a little. You can have an ancillary building downtown.
Well, you know, Bruce and Bo just redid the the one right next to our parking lot, or half our parking lot. Thompson's happily on that. But so, you know, that might be a solution.
Yeah.
So unless y'all want to give up the old historic post office next year. The new one is?
No, we don't wait that long. There's space in buildings east.
Okay.
That are not far from you.
What, what, what?
Look, easy walk, good ancillary.
Susan, we got a plan for you already.
I know. We'll take, we'll take all the help we can.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
Thank you.
I don't think we all know you. Uh, I'm Tim Davis, the mayor. Everybody wants to go around and introduce her quick?
I'm Jessica Walker.
I'm Wendell Williams.
I'm Susan Long, and I'm only standing up because I'm recovering from a fractured hip. I just need to stand periodically, so it means nothing other than just to go forward.
I also feel better.
Oh, I I do, I do. I just have to stand periodically.
So it's Kimmy Willbe.
Kimmy Willbe.
Very good, very good. And you're with?
I'm with M R B group.
Okay, very good. And what is your position there? What do you?
Uh, I'm an architect.
Okay.
I think when I filled out my form, I was technically not quite an architect, but I
Okay.
I have my number now.
Good for you. We don't have those apps in front of us, so forgive me if.
Okay, don't worry.
So pretty involved process. We just, you know, had some questions. Everyone's getting the same questions, um, you know, give us as much. The more the better, or as little information as possible. So first question is, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the Main Street Advisory Board.
Okay, um, well, I'll just start. I'm originally from Virginia.
Okay.
Um, but my husband is in the military. Southern Virginia, I don't know if that.
Where?
Where in Virginia?
Yeah, what town?
Uh, around Roanoke, Virginia.
Okay, sure.
Actually, it's Gretna, Virginia.
Okay. I was in Washington for thirty years, so I I know where you're from.
Oh, nice, yeah. It might be the moonshine capital, but maybe not. Um, and my husband's in the military, so we've been moving around a little bit. I keep it Fort Hood. So, um, I've been able to live in different cities and with my architectural background. Um, I've been able to work on just downtown projects, but then I lived in Indianapolis, Maryland, um, and then Colorado Springs. And both times I was, I was able to have a position where I could, uh, work towards uh, helping the downtown area, and I just really liked being part of the community that I'm in. Um, and in Colorado Springs, we worked on things like the bike, uh, rent a bike thing that they had just started, which I believe Temple is working on.
The scooters.
The scooters.
Been talked about.
Okay. Um, and then also just kind of revitalizing alleyways and the downtowns for those as well, and I'm just excited to get started, um, get kind of into Temple's downtown. Uh, I am on the Main Street Design Committee, um, which they meet at our office each month, which has been kind of fun to be a part of. Um, and I I definitely bothered Tanya Reed to get a job with their office because I knew that they work kind of in downtown area, and I really liked the downtown area when we uh, first moved out here. Um, I've enjoyed trying to get our military friends to come downtown and enjoy some of the, some of the perks that are there because I know it's trying to be revitalized and bring people back into the area, so I just enjoy, enjoy doing that.
Do you like your new building downtown?
I do, yeah.
It was really nice.
It's really great. I tried to live in downtown Temple, but I didn't get that house, but if I did, I would have been three minutes away from that house. Yeah.
Good. Okay, bring it.
We're sorry you didn't get that.
Me too, really cute.
There'll be others.
There will. We got, we got a pretty cute house down by, uh, by our apartment, so.
Oh, good, good. Okay, what's, uh, and you've kind of already answered this, I think, what skills, talents or experience? You definitely answered the experience department you bring to this position.
Um, yeah, mostly just with the architecture background and in Colorado Springs, we also did some, uh, our office had a planning department, which I was able to help out in as well, so I have a little bit of background with.
So did you work for the city in Colorado Springs?
No, I worked for, um, uh, just another architecture firm who worked with a lot of municipal projects. Um, and so I was able to take part in those projects from that route there, but. Um, yes, so architecture, design, um, kind of rendering and making like visualizing kind of what or well, creating like renders visualizations of what you kind of want to see as progress and things like that. I've done a lot of.
Good.
How long have you been in?
Um, just over a year, so right before COVID. Yeah, so I haven't had the greatest of, or been able to get everywhere as much as I would have liked, but now the thing is, we're back up hopefully.
Yep.
How long have you been staying here?
Um, at the least two to three years and, but we're thinking about maybe getting out of the army, possibly longer than that. So it depends on what husband decides to do, but maybe longer. I really like my job, so hopefully longer.
I love that comment. We were considering.
I love that too. I am not in the army.
But that's the way she got you.
Yeah.
You are.
Yeah.
That's the way it should be. You should vote.
Because you go with it when y'all pack up and move, right?
I do, and we were in.
It's like you're there too.
Yes, we were in the middle of nowhere, Arizona for like six months. That was not my favorite location.
Paradise.
Yeah, I came here and I was like, oh my gosh, there's grass and trees. Well, then that happened, yeah.
Um, so what would you like to accomplish as a board member? Is there anything sort of overarching that on that board that you're really passionate about?
Um, just based on, I did attend a couple of the meetings virtually, um, the last couple, and then also being on the Design Committee. I I really enjoy just doing the visualization part and kind of, um, just giving my perspective, especially from what other cities that I've lived in have done. Um, what's worked and what hasn't worked for them. Um, and just being able to try and bring more people into downtown Temple. And telling like some of the military people to come on down here, because I know a lot of them do live in Temple, and a lot of our friends don't really know about the downtown area, but, um, they go to kind of the thirty-first street area, so I've been trying to get them to come down, so I guess my passion would be the visualization and then getting doing what I can to get the people that I know, even though I haven't been here for that long, to kind of come and enjoy the downtown.
You know, there are lots of people that have lived in Temple almost their whole lives, and they don't know downtown, or the new downtown, let's put it that way. They don't know things that have changed downtown. They just saw downtown deteriorate and stopped coming. So you bringing a whole different group is wonderful, really wonderful.
Yeah, I think they would be really interested in in that portion, especially because I don't think a lot of people who come to Fort Hood want to be in, like, live in Colleen. There's a town there, it's a terrible place, but
I think you're right.
But I don't think there's a town there, and I think a lot of people that can do it would rather be in Temple, especially when they have spouses who want to work and things like that, and there's just more opportunities here, so I think getting, like, putting more attention on bringing some of them here would be helpful, for sure.
Do you have, uh, a question for us? Anything that's?
Maybe more on like the history of the downtown, like you started to talk about since I'm not entirely familiar with being here for a long period of time.
How far back do you want to go?
Yeah.
Resident story. When was it, when was it, uh, thriving, thriving, right, yeah?
Up until the Temple Mall was built. And seriously, when Scott White moved out of downtown and built its own field where they come to, Scott White was located downtown.
Oh, okay.
And they moved out on the hill in their, in the early sixties, and then the mall came in the seventies, fairly early seventies, I think. That became the commerce center of Temple versus the abandoned. Because prior to that, uh, men's shops, ladies' shops, all kind of retail was located in downtown.
Sears and Wendy's.
Yeah, all of it.
Cheese was an old abundance. Cheese Brothers Steakhouse, that's where that comes from.
And all this is withered down behind because the new shiny object, the mall, got got all of the attention. And so, you know, the the thing is, something has to be broken before you fix it. Downtown Temple got broken. Now it's in the process of being fixed.
Yeah, I think that's awesome. And I'm from a small town, so I prefer like the downtown area than going to like the chains and things out on, I guess, the thirty-first street, isn't that where all of that is?
Yes, yeah.
Um.
So you're a smidge over time, but I've got a question for you, so give us a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Whenever you talk about revitalizing the alleyways.
Yeah.
That's not something we hear a lot. Um, tell us a just a little bit about that.
Okay, well, in.
Because I like that concept that we're going to have it successfully downtown. People don't necessarily need to drive by and see the the wires and the dumpsters.
Um, well, in Colorado Springs, when our office was asked to do some of the designs of some of the darker alleyways, that they wanted to make look a little bit happier. Um, some of the things that we did were either kind of paint some of the dumpsters or things like that, maybe even put murals on the walls in there. Um, the important one was definitely lighting, whether it was like hanging lights or something kind of artsy or some other kind of like lighting just to make it more inviting, and the ones that they really, um, focused mostly on were, uh, alleyways that kind of led from one, one part of the city to another part of the city. That might be a walking path, um, and then other ones, maybe just dress them up a little bit, make sure that they were clean, but really just kind of pick the most important alleyways that could be walkways and make those little projects.
Great idea.
Kind of each of them be their own separate appeal.
So they have jazz festivals everywhere somewhere downtown.
Part of?
They have jazz festivals.
Yeah, sure.
And they use the some of the wider alleyways for like artists to set up a little, you know, a little kiosk, not a kiosk, but, you know, a little pop-up. And, yeah, so they could be used, and it becomes part of, you know, the larger venue that was, that takes place in a parking lot, so that's just always been a bit interesting.
Good idea. I like the way you phrased, I can't remember the word you used, but the lighting, something eclectic or different, you you had a word that was
Obviously.
Artsy, yeah, artsy, good. And that that would be so nice to have some individual different artsy.
Yeah, I think it's only just artsy people that seem to be drawn first to a downtown area.
Somebody will paint dumpsters.
Do what?
Did we need somebody who will paint dumpsters? Right, that's not artsy.
But, but we. Yeah.
Just how you raise your hand.
Oh, I just.
Oh.
Yeah, but the art classes at the high school, Christina, I think it's from there, the high school, the head of, uh, the arts. I've forgotten her name. That's something she's interested in doing. When she was hired, she expressed an interest in getting classes that do murals on dumpsters and things like that. It's it's almost free labor, if you will, and artsy kids.
More questions from Miss Wilby or do you have any for us?
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I.
Your interest.
Yeah, thank you, Ed.
And you know, Tanya knows everything there is to know.
I like you. I've asked her lots of questions.
She's, she's been here forever and knows ins and outs.
She has him in, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you.
All right, well, let's just dig in. Um, we're running a little bit behind. So, uh, pretty simple, we've got three questions for you and then we're going to ask you if you have any questions for us, so. Um, first one is, uh, if you would please, we know you, but tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving.
Well, um, I grew up here, I guess, in Temple. Went to Belton School District, Belton High School. And always felt in high school, I kind of hung out with more kids in Temple than I did in Belton. I wanted to be in Temple. Our families in, involved in Temple, went to college at A and M. Um, went and worked in Dallas and Minnesota for a while. And then one day I just didn't really like waking up at five AM. Within a five minute window, ten minute window, if I didn't leave the house on time, I'd be thirty minutes late. Or I was thirty minutes early. So I was just wondering why I was doing all this when. I have, you know, a family business that I can get into and my family being back here. So I came back, worked with Lloyd Thomas, worked with Will Morris, I still work with Will. And I'm currently at Johnny's Cleaners with my father. I don't think my work defines me, but. Yeah, I, I put a lot of time in my work. I try to be as diligent as possible. I don't think I'd be here, you know, eighteen, twenty years old. I was pretty, pretty motivated, but I was a little bit wild. And now I feel like all my failures, all the dumb stuff that I did, all the things that I've learned about myself, I feel like I'm. Somewhat mature for a twenty nine year old person enough to, um, want to come back and, and see Temple be better than what it was. Um, when I was growing up, I remember downtown was just, downtown's always seemed fine to me. Um, being at the cleaners since I was a kid, but when you step back, I realize that people don't feel safe. Some women don't feel safe going downtown after dark and things like that. I just think that the community, there's any way that I could help. Um, in any facet, you know, that'd be my objective.
You mean currently serve on the bad half committee?
No, I don't. I go to some of the meetings with Dan Keller.
Okay.
But I'm not on that committee.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were. You've been back in Temple how long now?
Since twenty seventeen, maybe, four, five years.
What's your degree?
It was industrial distribution. It was in engineering. Um, I have a minor in business, but. I think I learned more out of college than in college. In that frustrating, that's the way. And going to A and M, we were always drinking and having a good time going to football games and doing dumb stuff, so. We learned, but, you know, there's, it was definitely a good college experience, I guess.
Sometimes we grew up in spite of ourselves, we'd be all right. Okay, very good, um. So did you, uh, did you answer the part of the question where we asked, um, why you're interested in serving?
My family's been here for about, well, let me, my family's been here for a while. I just remember stories about my grandfather, you know, working and like. Digging through the trash for, for food in the Great Depression. I'm sure a lot of our families did the same thing. And, um, Temple's been really good for my family. Um, and if there's a way that I could give back, that's kind of the purpose. I know a lot of people in Temple, grew up around the church. And I've decided to come back. I, that's one of my problems with the area. I think we don't retain enough educated young folks to come back. But I'm not saying I'm a genius, but hopefully I've learned something in college. I've learned something in my business, I swear. I can apply that to the public or, or listen to the public.
You're third generation, right?
So yeah, I guess you kind of answered the second question, which is what skills, talent or experience would you bring to the position? Do you have anything else to add there?
So working in commercial real estate, I just, I, I did that for a while. It was difficult at first. Um, not making any money, having to live, you know, with my father. I think the first year that works with, uh, Aldridge Thomas, I made probably about four thousand dollars.
Hmm.
And, um, it just really made me stick to the necessities in life. Um, having to deal with people that are not always nice to you, that want something from you or you want something from them. You have to, you, you can't carry yourself in a way that most people can. You have to be professional and understand what you're saying and what, understanding what people are telling you. I don't do that all the time very well, but the times that I don't, I feel like I've learned from. Being at the cleaners is totally different. You're dealing with customers every day. My biggest thing that I don't like at cleaners is the small talk. It gets repetitive. And so sometimes you don't have the conversations that we're having right now, where it is too much, but. You don't really expect that, a thirty second conversation that somebody comes in and brings the garbage. But, you know, everything that we do at the cleaners and hopefully everything, you know, that we do on the real estate side. You want to treat people with respect. And, you know, your actions speak more than I think your words do. And if we give a good product and good service to somebody, then I think that's going to bring people together and bring us more business. But. Just whether it's serving someone on the real estate side or the cleaner side, having people cry, having people crying of emotion, happy emotion. Or just being relieved that, you know, you sold this building for me that no one could sell. Yeah, it's been on the market for eight years. Now I can retire. Now I can give some to my, my daughter. Now she's getting married, things like that. That's, that's what makes me feel good.
Do you, um, do you have any questions for us?
Well, I was kind of confused. I, it said that it was the main street and then I applied for the planning, so I'm not entirely sure what I'm being.
This is the main street.
Okay, yeah. So I know, understand it's a, it's a newer organization. I think Jeff Shepard opened that up in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen.
It's about the timing.
What, what is?
When we got the main street as historic designation, that would be about twenty seventeen.
What, what would you say is your biggest interest between the two, planning and zoning or main street? And I'm just asking. So there's, so you said you applied for two boards. You weren't sure what you were here for. Which, which one?
Okay.
So of, of your generalities, you talked about corporate real estate. Um, is, is your larger interest probably going to fall with the planning and zoning board or with the main street advisory? Would you concern on one of those?
Well, when I got back here, my biggest, like, uh, when I'd go to city council meetings or planning zone meetings, that's. You know, I, I really wanted to be involved in that. I thought that was really nice, but, you know. I don't want to say that I only do one thing because I'm open for however I can serve, but. You know, we have a, a good interest in downtown. Downtown hasn't always looked the way it has now. And we have, you know, a few key members in downtown to thank for that, as well as the city initiatives, so. I think both. I think both are. Are, suit my interests, but playing zoning, I just, the people that come to planning zoning. They're worried, they're upset that a developer is going to put in an apartment right here and create more traffic for their kids to go through their therapy. I'm not entirely sure. That's why I'm here is to ask you a question on how I can serve the main street board. I'm not familiar with the main street board as I would be playing zoning, but I'm sure both have their impact.
Oh, sure. Yeah, and if you guys have a business downtown, um, you know, ultimately our, our goal is to, uh, to continue to develop downtown. And any businesses situated down there now would be, you know, uh, you know, obviously an important part of the planning process, so.
So you know, but if you're, you're interested in real estate also, I think it would be appropriate based on your skill set to, uh, you know, for even one of those to work, so. We appreciate it. So how would I be able to make a difference and how would I be able to be a positive asset? What would be the daily? Daily undertaking?
Well, thankfully it won't be daily. That's good.
Thankfully for you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, again, just, just the experience, uh, I am. You know, I, I know my neighborhood where my office is, but I'm not downtown, so I can't really bring a lot of insight to that as a business person that would serve on a board. And, um, so, uh, you know, just your, your daily experience really in, in both aspects, in your own state. Ventures as well as, uh, you know, owning a business downtown, working downtown and knowing the people that are downtown. So, you know, I, I think that you would, uh, fit both places. And then, um, it's an advisory board, so, um, we would be asking that, that board obviously then to, to advise the city on, uh. On, you know, the moves and the, uh, changes that are coming downtown that you guys see, these city leaders with necessaries.
I think that'd be helpful. I mean, we have a lot of customers that come in concerned or ask internal questions. But I think the whole aura of downtown is positive and it's on the incline, not. You know, there's definitely movement.
Yeah.
Well, you are uniquely positioned. You have a foot in both camps. You have downtown business ownership. You interact with people from downtown all day, but you got real estate experience, which on a P and Z side would help you understand some of the planning and zoning issues. So I think you're uniquely positioned to be a candidate for either one of them.
I, I appreciate that assessment.
What, what do you, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
You've, your family's been here for a long time, third generation. You've known downtown. Your whole life. And you see things that are beginning to change. Do you see things that? What ideas do you have or thoughts do you have about things for downtown that, that are coming or not coming?
So yesterday we were in a design committee with, I, I believe the main street organization led by Dan Keller and Nancy Glover. And some of the topics that we talked about were lighting, public restrooms. And I guess just the beautification of the area. I think that all takes time, but, you know, the biggest, if women are, feel unsafe being down there at night. I think there needs to be something about that. Okay, so either lighting. Um, we have some riffraff, I wouldn't say crime, but there are some homeless people that. We have a guy that I've actually made friends with that was actually behind our cleaners. And, uh, he's in a wheelchair. I haven't seen him in a while, but, you know, some of these guys are, are there one day and then mentally not there the other.
Sure.
And so whatever we do for them, I'm not sure if that's going to be enough. I need to see a doctor. But having public restrooms, having lighting, having. Having sidewalks that are not going to make someone trip, break a hip and sue the city would be.
If I'm all into broken hips.
Drake McLean used to eat at one of our buildings and that's when Benny used to be there at Dibs.
Yes.
And that, being, you know, in, in high school or whatever, I'd always ask myself, this, this man's worth X amount of money. He comes to eat.
With a lot of X's.
Yeah. He comes to get in this little rinky dink place that looks like that. And the sidewalk is just all uneven and if he were to fall one day, that is so embarrassing. And he, good thing he has the medical coverage and the amount of money to cover that, but. He is, if I were going to, if I was one of your age and had a daughter or had a son and let's go take prom pictures. Where are you going to take them at a downtown? Probably Georgetown or Slayo, not Temple. So I think we're on our way. It, it, you need more people to want to invest and, and want to have their business there, but. It's their chicken or the egg, trying to step right. So I think if we put a little bit better infrastructure in what we're doing now, I think people are going to come and I think that's what's really happening.
Good. Thanks for your perspective.
Anything else?
Thank you so much. I'm sorry you gave me such a hard.
No, it's, hopefully everything will be fine. It's just, it's life, right?
Will said is very true. It's leaps and bounds. Progress.
Yeah, you, uh, you never know when the last time you're going to see somebody. And, uh. The last time I saw one of my particular cousins, it wasn't on a good note. Now I still love her, but what happened that day? You just never think that something like that would happen. And I haven't been emotional at all. And I haven't been emotional at all.
Just like cheese.
I'm so used to it, I don't think it's gonna go away.
Eventually.
Yeah, eventually.
So thanks for being here, we all, does everybody know Jacob, Tredos, Bird Creek?
Hi, everybody.
Yeah. I walked into the restaurant the other day after he saw me in his other restaurant, and as he drove by, he said, how much money are you gonna give me this week?
He's paying all my bills.
Yeah, yeah. So we're gonna, uh, cut through Pleasant Trees, Turpist off Friday, and if you have one. So, um, and really, you know, kind of through the conversations, um, we're gonna ask you three questions, and those are, tell us a little bit about yourself, why you're choosing serving, what skills, talents, and experience do you bring to the position, and what you hope to accomplish as a board member? So answer those one at a time.
Okay.
Or what's kind of happened is, you know, as people have talked of all three categories getting answered. But the first question is, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're serving.
Um, well, I mean, I've, I've been, uh, I've been the, on this board since it kinda came to, to fruition, I guess.
How long?
Two and a half years ago is when we started talking about it, when Dan, Dan came along and became the Main Street manager. That's when we started this thing, it was, you know, it wasn't under the city council or anything like that, so it wasn't governed by, you know, it was all suggestion based and things like that. So I was always the, um, Joe started as the chairman, and then last year, I was voted in as the chairman. I sat as the chairman for the last year on this board. So I think that gives me some qualification, uh, just having a lot of familiarity with the board and the members and, and kind of the mission statements, being involved in the, the, uh, the writing of those, uh, mission statements and kind of what, what the purpose of the board was. On top of that, I am a stakeholder, an operator in downtown, and, and, you know, everything that we do primarily revolves around that area, so it's pretty important that, the voices are heard from the stakeholders and the business owners and, and operators that are down there, so, um, I don't, I don't know that there's much more, it's pretty imperative that I, that I am on this board, it's, even if it's just an advisory position or whatever. I'd love to be the chairman again to kind of lead it through the first year under the guidance of the, the city council, um, but, you know, it's, I think, like, like we all are, we're pretty busy with, with what we're doing. I do tend to make enough time for all this kind of stuff. Because it's important, it's important to the, to the growth of my businesses and my future businesses and the prospects of what we're doing, other properties in downtown, so, that should answer that question, hopefully.
What skills, talent, and experience would you bring to this position?
Uh, maybe the knowledge base of the actual board itself. On top of that, you know, uh, real estate in downtown and how things operate and, you know, demographics of the way things are happening and where money could potentially be allocated and making suggestions based on those type, types of things. I work seven days a week in the, in the environment, and, uh, I bring in a lot of, uh, the information I, that I see, and I can bridge a lot of gaps between, uh, maybe personal connections where we can, where we can figure things out, uh, as we have board meetings. So, um, maybe just that I've built a lot of really, really, really strong bridges, and it tends to always help with this committee, because we can quickly find out, uh, how to connect A and B.
I'm not asking you for any, um, you know, names or anything like that, do you feel like that current board works well together?
Um, I think that we've always worked well together, uh, yeah, I think sometimes.
Relevant?
The board itself.
To, to you, to your businesses and to other businesses, or is it?
It, it's, it's definitely relevant. Whether or not we have goals that are heard and achieved is another thing entirely. It's not for a lack of effort, um, you know, we, we've done monthly meetings even through COVID, we, we stuck to it. We, uh, we did everything we're supposed to do, we had subcommittees on the ground gathering information or putting things together, and, uh, the problem is, is a lot of, a lot of the time, the things, uh, all on deaf ears, and I think hopefully.
City's ears?
Yeah. But it wasn't, it wasn't a city recognized board, you know, until this point, so it was all recommendations to staff, and it wasn't, it wasn't information that was being, uh, directly sent up. And I think that with this opportunity, you know, after a few months ago, whenever it was adopted as an, an actual board where we can speak directly to you guys, I think that gives us a whole lot more opportunity to make real changes. And, I mean, I've made requests in the past, like a bunch of requests for advertising and things like that, I think the problem, the problem that we're having with these subboards or these boards that are very pinpointed to certain areas is that a lot of times decisions get made without going through the, the channels, because we weren't really a recognized board, or that there weren't terms in place for this or that. And what I think the hope is, is that the relevancy of this program is seen by you guys, and we can actually start making things happen. So, yes, yes and no. The board is relevant, has it been super relevant to you all, has it been something on y'all's radar to this point?
Okay. Well, obviously, the city is investing billions downtown.
Yep.
And y'all have invested.
Absolutely.
And so, um,
As far as infrastructure changes, I don't think anybody's doubting what the city's rapid, that's not what I'm saying, I think it's more along the lines of how are we promoting traffic? Um, and that's such an important part of developing an area, you could dump billions into it, it wouldn't really matter if you're not converting the right amount of traffic.
You're not the first person to say that.
It's, it's true, if you can't get them down there, there wasn't a point, you know, it's, it's a, a good point, a good example is the food truck park.
Is the one?
The food truck park?
Yes.
You put one million dollars spent on a food truck park that has, that has two trucks in it? I tried, I, I sat down with the parks and I told them, you know, my recommendations and all that kind of stuff, and it all comes down to advertising, so. The, the disconnect, I think, with all of these boards is probably with marketing.
Has that been stalled because of COVID?
No.
It stalled before COVID.
Businesses in general are not stalled from COVID, I can tell you.
No, I mean the food truck park.
Well, it's businesses, you rely on small businesses, none, none of that has been stalled.
So it's marketing?
Absolutely, it's marketing. And then we've also got some other things that need to get tied up with, um, other things that have happened with the food truck stuff. You know, there's a lot of effort to put into, to operate to make, uh, very, very small margins for a food truck.
Oh, sure.
And things have gotten a little, you know, the belt's been tightened on those guys even recently, so it's no surprise that they're not, they're not jumping in line to be a food truck.
The, the new, um, ordinances.
Which I get, they're good, they're, they're necessary, but they're, they were very abrupt, it wasn't.
They were abrupt, we did make mistakes.
Yeah, and, I mean, that was, that was recognized. That was recognized, it's just, it's one of the, it's just, it's kind of indicative of a lot of the things that happened, like marketing strategies that don't go through the right channels. Everyone finds out that they're spending X amount of dollars on a campaign that no one knows about, that's not really centric to anything. So.
Hey, I've been told downtown's been in the fishery, uh, talking about marketing and attracting people. Um, Crossroads Park and some of the big activities that happen out there, a lot of parents, kids come downtown, and do you see that?
Well, I did that, I went to Crossroads every day. I drew them in, I did what I could, I've got, I've got billboards placed right over there on Adams, just so that we can get people downtown with mimosas on it.
So you have seen a benefit?
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, but it's very specifically to Saturdays at Tredo. Not so much, uh, we're not getting it at Bird Creek or anything like that, so. It's, kids go play, they got a little bit of energy left, they can play up there, it's a place that you can go, so, I mean, our business strategy has always been pretty pinpoint on certain aspects of the community, or demographically speaking, maybe what we think can make the most money by focusing, like, for example, a playground, the playgrounds, it's very focused on family orientation and trying to get people from certain sections of the city that may not know about us or may not know downtown, and just draw them in, so. Uh, I definitely have seen some cross-city, uh, pickup here in the last maybe six to eight months. Bird Creek is, we're at a point now where Bird Creek may be moving, because our Saturday, Sunday brunches are so hectic.
Moving physically or moving?
Physically, we don't have the space.
To another location.
We can't accommodate, uh, anymore, but what we're seeing, so, which is a really good thing, and I guess that can go back to your point about businesses taking a hit during COVID, absolutely not, I think that if there's a, if there's a quality, uh, standard and maybe enough drive from the powers that be, then you can't fail, a lot of people want to support you, so. It's sad to see stuff like the food truck park. You know?
It's terrible.
Being utilized.
It's not being utilized, I don't, I don't understand what the stall was.
It doesn't exist, correct?
I did see what the stall was, I know that there were some community, uh, possible business owners that didn't like the idea of the competition, but that's very narrow-minded, and that's not really how you, how you do things, I mean, it's all, in downtown, we've got so much space and so much ability to pack in. I, I mean, I would say, in my opinion, this is just an opinion, we're at probably twenty percent of what we should be at as far as operating restaurants, bars, and just entertainment in general.
Is some of that, the parking and the parking garage is going to assist that?
Well, there's no question, that the faster the parking lots go up, the faster this whole thing gets to the finish line, there's no question. But it's also about investors, I mean, my, my partners and myself, there's a few others, but there's not, there's not a massive push like we're doing, but that's not to be expected from everyone, not everyone has the resources to do that, but it certainly should be easier for those that don't have the resources to be able to seamlessly plant themselves in an area like downtown where there is so much focus and so much money. Um, you know, we have the, the, the RZ response, what, well, I guess it was like eight years ago that they made a plan, or seven years ago or so, and then they started implementing it about three or four. That amount of money is the, is the, is the perfect springboard for an area to flourish, it's like throwing the best, most quality fertilizer on a crop that you possibly could, but if you don't add the sunlight and the water, and it didn't timely matter, you know, it's just not gonna grow.
And the analogy, the sunlight, the water.
That's businesses.
Businesses and the marketing.
And marketing, and it's, and it's ease of ordinances and communication from the city down to the stakeholders, that's a big problem.
Has it improved?
No. It's, maybe for a little bit it did, and then, then we got hit with all of these legal ordinance changes that no one knew about.
The food truck.
That's, that's the first one. I mean, I, I don't, I'm pretty sure there's other ones that are coming down the line.
And you don't feel that downtown business owners have been involved with developing or being aware of the ordinances as they're being looked at and being developed?
Yeah, mostly awareness, I don't think it's a, I don't think that I have any right or anybody else does to tell the city what to do, but it's nice to know what's going on.
So once they're developed, you're not notified in any
Correct.
uh, timely manner, but you don't see a necessity to work with the development?
I mean, I'd love to, I'd love to, but I don't.
Truck ordinances should have had food truck people working on the ordinances.
I would agree with you a hundred percent, but I don't wanna put the cart before the horse, I think that just if we could maybe focus on the communication piece, all of those other things, and this, I mean, it's typical in any business. I mean, it's just, the, the city is running a business.
Sure.
At the end of the day, and so communicating to those people that are key factors to making sure that the city is still bringing in tax dollars or whatever, I mean, that's, that's the goal.
Sure.
Is to, to develop relationships and communication bonds with people that are bringing in sales tax dollars to move more revenue, to pay for better streets, to pay for better things. So, communication, I think, is probably the first, the first place, but I, I am very hopeful that with all of these boards that were accepted into this program that you guys are doing, I think that this will really start to open up those, those communication, um, barriers that possibly have.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't.
That's right, but.
Well, if it doesn't, we need to let us know.
Well, and that's, that's the thing, you've got someone, at least in me, that, um, maybe this is, maybe this lines are all three questions. I am someone that will not, not tell you.
Or straightforward?
Because it's, it affects me, it affects my family, it affects the place I live, it affects my taxes, it affects every single thing about my life is the area that I am rooted. Uh, and even broader, I'm, I'm about Temple, but very specifically right now, for the next probably five to seven years, it's downtown Temple.
Sure.
So, you've got, you've got somebody in the middle of it that is making millions of decisions that they, that are based around a lot of these external factors that come from the city, so.
Well, I mean, obviously, we appreciate the investment from the Bates family, from the Harvey family, we're extremely happy for your success, but we wanna be part of making you guys, helping you guys become more successful.
Sure.
So there's not anybody in this room that, please don't ever talk to anybody in this room that will not listen, or is awful to talk to. You live right down the street from me.
No, I feel that way, one hundred percent.
Okay.
Um, maybe there are some people not in this room.
That's fine.
But we.
They work for us. They work for us.
Exactly. We need to hear those things, we real, I'm very appreciative of you coming in here and saying that today.
True.
Very important.
Well, I mean, anytime.
Really important to us.
There's anything I can, I can shed light on or just help, I mean, all I wanna do is help. And I want to grow, and I want the city to be, to grow, and I want the city to, to eventually incubate more and more of my businesses, and that's.
That's exactly what we want.
All I want, so.
Every, as Tim said, everyone in this room.
Hopefully, I'm qualified for the position.
You're just not, you're just not passionate.
That's funny, I'm probably definitely not like.
I had no idea you lived right down the street from Tim, so I'm glad you're there.
Yeah, on Thirteenth and New.
That's not really a recommendation to be on this board, you know.
That's okay, that's all right.
But if you come help the car.
I might, I was getting done right now, but I had to pay for it.
Thanks for getting on boards. Yeah, yeah, no kidding, no kidding. Thanks for your time.
Sure. Yep.
Thanks for your time, this is Sir, all very good.
Alrighty, well, I'm sure we'll see everyone pretty soon. Thank y'all. They brought a bunch of stuff.
What kind of stuff?
Uh, all kinds, I guess. Cookies, crackers.
Do, does anybody need a bathroom break or anything?
Yeah, I still have a little.
Only ten minutes behind.
That we, we've got a serious problem, or at least I do. There are too many applicants for not enough spots, and they're all good applicants.
Looking for a job.
Well.
I would love a water.
Okay.
If you're not my weight as well.
No, I'm gonna leave right after, I gotta go to another meeting, so. But, can I get a, or maybe snacks?
Bring them all.
Bring them all, okay.
And she's the ordinance teacher, and she only has like ten minutes, and she, her interview starts in forty minutes.
Okay.
And do you tell Mr. McBride that we're running just?
Yeah, we're gonna flip flop. Tell him we're moving him to eleven fifteen.
Eleven fifteen?
Yes.
Who is it?
Ashley Vernon.
He is? Is Vernon, are you there?
She's connecting.
Okay. Of course she connects, we have a lot of.
I told this, we have some things for this guest. Anybody else want anything to drink?
I just want a water.
Water?
I'm drinking that one too.
And I'm, I.
Ashley, can you hear us?
Um? Oh, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
He is?
Can you hear us?
And see me?
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Barely, you're soft.
Okay, I'll just, I'll speak up. Thank you for, uh, thank you for joining. Okay, I'll just, I'll speak up. Thank you for, uh, thank you for joining us this morning. Uh, I, I know you have a, a limited time slot, so let's just hop right in. Uh, first, I appreciate your willingness to serve on this board. Um, and we, we, uh, we basically have three questions for you. And uh, the first question is if you would, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the Main Street Advisory Board.
Sure. So my husband and I moved to Temple a few years back and we knew that wherever we landed next, we were going to open a business and we found ourselves in Temple and loved the community and the direction that everything was headed. And so we slowly started to become involved. And each of us have a lot of experience uh doing community engagement and I have a background in education. I actually just switched back over to being in the classroom. So thank you so much for accommodating my schedule. I really appreciate it. And we kind of took our first couple of years in Temple, learning about everything from how the downtown is run to tradition, to really kind of enjoying that smaller town feel, which for us was very welcomed from coming from Austin, which is very hustling and bustling. And we started attending the meetings and slowly getting involved and getting acquainted with other business owners. And then we acquired a property that we will be turning into a coffee shop and beer garden, hopefully later this year. And then attended the meetings more, had a bigger voice, and I kind of felt with the encouragement from Dan Kelleher that I was being called to participate in a bigger aspect in a broader capacity and wanted to be involved with the Main Street Advisory Board.
Very good. Um, what skills, talents, or experience do you think that you'll bring to uh sitting on this Main Street Advisory Board?
So I'm a really good and active listener, so I like to make sure that I'm getting all of the information, but I'm also not shy to speak up and give a voice if I feel that there's one ready. I take action on items that need to be done. I'm pretty involved with the Temple Small Business Coalition and we've worked really hard to bring the farmer's market back to Temple. So people like to tell me that not only will I get things started, but I'll also get them finished to completion. And volunteer coordinating, event organizing, all of those things that require attention to detail are right in my wheelhouse.
You're talking faster than I can rap.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last one.
Uh, last one is what would you like to accomplish as a board member?
As a board member, I'm really looking forward to having the ability to vote on topics. I've been sitting in on a lot of the things the last year and a half and being able to have a voice that has a little bit of pull. I feel uh will be really beneficial for the small businesses, but also I've lived in the downtown the last year and a half. So having been a resident and switching over to putting the hat of a small business owner, um, that's kind of what I'm hoping to be able to accomplish, that lens of both stakeholders.
Can you tell me just a little bit more about your experience as a business coordinator?
Sure. So I was in the Peace Corps for two years and uh when I was in the Peace Corps, I did a lot of the volunteer training programs. So we would organize at the local level, but also at the national level. So logistics, coordinating, negotiating rates for hotels, things like that, meals, all of that. And then domestically, I was the volunteer coordinator for the elementary school that I worked at in Austin. So for our big fundraiser, which was the school carnival, I partnered with the local university across the way and their student athletes came out. They were able to get volunteer hours and we had the much-needed extra man help to make sure that everything ran smoothly. And then I'm also um currently the volunteer coordinator for Ruxon Maine. So I kind of help make sure that we have the manpower so that that runs effortlessly the day of.
So the uh, this committee meeting uh right now, it's slated for the last Friday of each month at nine AM. You anticipate having an issue making meetings?
No, during the summer it won't. And Dan told me that when I'm not able to, John, my husband can stand in on my behalf. And then if there's ever something that requires a vote, I'll make sure that it's taken care of by me.
Okay, understood. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't. What are the next steps of how this works?
So today we're interviewing all the applicants uh that will, uh, that have applied to sit on this board. And then um we actually have a long interview process for all boards. It's gonna last for the next ten days or so. And then after that, we as a council will get back together and place people um on those boards. So really, uh, you probably should not plan to hear back from us until roughly April one or so. So, you know, give, give us a little bit of time. This is gonna be a couple of week process for us.
Okay, sounds great. Do you have any other questions for me or anything that I said that was concerning?
Council?
I do have a question. You um hoping to turn a, a property you purchased into a coffee shop? Where is that property?
So we're the ones that are located at two zero nine North Seventh Street. We're Fox Dog.
I thought that's, I thought that was probably the one. Thank you.
Yes, that's us.
So you have been on the board already?
I have been sitting in on the meetings, yes.
But have not been a board member?
Correct.
So the, who's in red?
People who've applied for more than one position.
Oh, I got you. Okay. All right. I wasn't discreet then. Okay. Ms. Vernon, we thank you for slotting us in. I know you're busy. My wife and daughter.
No, thank you so much. I really appreciate the flexibility.
I know you, you featured her busy, so thank you for uh your commitment.
Thank you so much. You guys have a wonderful day.
Snap chest you brought up.
Katie, you speak Katie Hermon at Katie Wells. For the next council meeting, they workshop, she's gonna bring her um acai bowls. For us to try.
Who's, what's that?
You speak Katie Hermon at Katie Wells. She has brought you two meals and a class of them.
She and Neil uh.
Thank you.
Eighteen Market Building.
So um I was talking to her the other day about a new name, but she said.
How, how did you get her to do that?
Uh, she's a buddy and she offers.
So she's. How are we large? She should come every time.
She's having trouble with uh catering, of course, right now. You know, through COVID, it's just stopped altogether. So she's really focused on her meals. Paleo meals and she sends them all over the US. So there is, they're absolutely delicious. But she's trying to get back in some more. Her acai bowls are really delicious and very refreshing. It's like a, it looks like great um ice cream.
All right, thank you, Alan.
It's nutritious.
What, what's the word?
Acai.
What is it from?
I don't know. I'm lucky I can say it. It's A C A I and I always want to say it wrong. It's, it's acai.
I think we're taking a five-minute bottle break and Wendell's taking a phone break. So, just did if you need it.
It's right behind MRV, Chris. You know where MRV is?
North, nine North Seventeenth.
Which is right behind the central fire station, or right, just south of there.
And it's just a little, you know, one-story house. I think MRV even probably, you know, having them close is probably helpful. Um, I know whenever MRV has a food truck, it's very popular.
Oh, that's good, you know?
Well, yeah, I, I agree with Tim. We've got some, some talking to do. Um, we need a better understanding of how the communication is being lost.
That was really helpful.
Yeah. There's a presence somewhere.
I, I don't understand how with all the communication people we have right now, how it's not communicating.
Yeah, I wanted to bring it right. How, where is the, yeah, where's the barrier there?
How, where is the, yeah, where's the barrier there?
And don't want to have that happen again. We understand that communication was a great part of what went wrong. Lack of communication was a great part of what went wrong.
I, yeah, that was sad. That was unfortunate thing, but I think it helped shine a light on how everybody as a whole can, can work, work better. I learned that early on because I would, again, you know, my experience in military create policies or, or procedures for doing certain things. But I would just do it in my box hole or my bubble, not realizing what it affected outside here. And then I got, I got kind of pretty well because of it. And so I learned, I learned the hard way. And I kind of think the city model part of it too unfortunately.
We hope we learned.
Well, I mean, that's always part of it, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not the brewery business or the food truck business. I'm, I'm, I know what I do.
And that's one thing about us being volunteers is we don't always have full scope of understanding.
Correct. And that's one thing I think, you know, learning after retiring from the military and learning, you know, city governments and that they have these boards and commissions that help advise. Because none of us can be a subject matter expert on everything and thankfully probably to that case. But it's good, it, it's good that these boards exist, these board of commissions exist because it helps everybody across the board. I do think, you know, there is some of that, you know, more, I won't say diverse necessarily as far as skin color or gender or anything, but just diversity as far as not the same person serving.
Sure.
Every, you know, year after year or, you know, term after term. You gotta have some fresh ideas.
We agree completely.
Sadie, do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so.
I want to make a comment and you may have talked to other people back to food truck situation. Sadie and I communicated after that situation, both by email and also by telephone. Yeah, yeah. He contacted me. We had good give and take on it. And I compliment you for the way you handled that and, and the discussions we had. And he made a comment earlier that he's a guy that digs into things. Yes, he does.
Yeah.
He researched the, the coordinates. He had his points and he knew the direction that, that he felt it should go. And I think the fact we came back and addressed the issues, maybe not all of them, or beneficial or a part and parcel of your involvement.
I'm glad to hear that. So I know, and you know, the, the other businesses that I kind of became like the central person because we deal with most of, most of them on a recurring basis throughout the brewery. And so it was easier to have one person hopefully kind of speak on a topic with, you know, everybody's consensus on, on the issue and their concerns than having 15 people talk and it's like the same thing over and over. These are the issues I need to address.
Much, much more thing.
I hope, yeah. And that's, yeah, I just, I, whatever, whether it's ministry, whether it's PMZ, whether, I did say that I was open for another board. Um, you know, what, whatever it might be, just, you know, um, I'll say the word, I can't complain about some stuff I don't get involved. You know, I couldn't complain if I don't vote. That's, that's how it works for us. I just looking forward to be more involved. Like we're doing with the market in town, you know, trying to get that thing going. It's just trying to, trying to help Temple become more of a destination place or friends and family type thing that, you know, people are, they're earning their money here because there's good, there's good jobs here, but they spend their money elsewhere and I don't like seeing that. We don't either. We call that leakage. We're, we're, we're trying to do what we can to, to help that. It's one of our biggest, and that's why we wanted to be in, in downtown Temple was, you know, I've never really had a downtown being military the whole time. We're always moving in. So, you know, that's why we wanted where the location in town where we wanted. And what our hope is that we can stay there for the very foreseeable future.
We hope that too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
But as far as those meetings are concerned, just being heavily involved with them, planning meetings and things like that.
Were you currently on any other board?
Just P and Z, just P and Z, so I'll take on another challenge. In my crazy life.
What skills, talents, or experience would you bring to the board?
Just the knowledge that number one that I've have engulfed myself in over the years of community to residents and on the real estate side of things, which is my career now, and that's what I do on an everyday basis. And so was to come and kind of what fits where Temple is, this is a busy place right about now. A lot of people, tons of people are coming to Temple. And so placement of certain things in my downtown area has to be pretty essential, pretty key for people to want to continue to come here spend their lives here. Also, a lot of retaining people here, I guess you could say. There are a lot of young individuals who will graduate, whether it's high school, college, typical college, et cetera, and then leave and go to somewhere else where they could be possibly utilizing the talent here or starting their business here. And so kind of the new direction of downtown and also business owners are young and I went to school with some of them and things like that. So just getting more people kind of involved in Temple. Let people know that Temple is different.
When did you graduate again?
Six, 2006. I'm sure we just.
We graduated from Temple.
I just feel old.
You left one because of our graduation. By yourself or accompanied?
I was keeping it really deep, the brokerage.
Where is there?
Keeping it really is on Berry Creek, right, right behind my teeth.
I know where he is, yes. Back, back there.
Yes, exactly.
What would you like to accomplish on the board?
Being a part of the growth, I think it's a vested interest once you're a part of something, number one. But then also seeing it from a start to finish type of thing. I remember years back when none of the business downtown was downtown. And then just kind of seeing that now, kind of what it's flourishing to do, it's kind of getting more vibrant, I think. Being a part of any type of community growth is something that I always enjoy.
Do you have any questions for us? Anybody else have any questions?
I've got one for you. Take a couple of minutes to kind of describe for us your vision of downtown Temple five, 10, 15 years from now.
Oh, wow. I think on the business standpoint of things, having a mixture of mom and pops or, you know, small business, also maybe an established restaurant, but then also having family oriented things or some forms of lounges things like a mixture of culture downtown will represent what Temple is. So it's diverse, we're small but getting to a peak point. And so it's becoming more and more diverse, more and more families, whether it's doctors or military or just your, you know, inspection worker, you know, it's a real diverse, you know, place. And given that it's not, you know, two minutes away from West Avenue, two minutes away from the mall, two minutes away from East Temple. And it's kind of right directly in the center of Temple. So I think that having that diverse culture and new things being brought down there will be pretty essential to the growth of Temple. Whether and then also like I would love to see more of like the residential, like townhomes, condos down there, a mixture of that because it's room for that. I think that, you know, we have a good starting point down, but yeah, just the diversity, that's kind of my mind frame of whatever all itself up in a nutshell. And then also the city working with those partners to make sure that transition, because it has to be appealing, has to be, you know, not necessarily say incentive, bring your business down there, but why would I remove my reasons down there? And I think city working with community, working with businesses will make that happen.
Excellent vision, thank you for sharing.
I love that you say residential.
Yes.
I want to move downtown too.
Yeah.
I like it.
Yes, yes, I mean.
I want the top floors of this building, if you'll ever do it.
Yes.
Susan Luck and I are going to share those two floors.
Well, I want people.
But we won't live long enough.
Well, I mean, there are a lot of people who are moving to that. I mean, we have down, I think, keep on going down 31st Street, past Stripes, those little townhomes over there, Belton. Belton is getting, I mean, they have 200 subdivisions, which is just straight townhomes, condo type of feel. So I think that we can incorporate those patches within the fabric of Temple, I think that it'd bring the attention there. That's kind of what people are moving smaller, they're not necessarily going bigger than those housing market. It is smaller as well compared to traditional homes. So just kind of thinking forward and intertwined with it too, but yet still bringing the traditional Temple and home, small town feel at the same time.
You know, when you think about that, it wasn't that long ago, there was no housing in downtown. You know, when you think about that, it wasn't that long ago, there was no housing in downtown Austin.
Yes.
Just commercial, yes, and some tax, very, very.
Yes.
Banks built, big buildings. And now it is a residential mecca.
Yes.
And it has happened in a relatively short timeframe.
Yes.
That's changing demographics, that's all those issues, but I think that is a worthwhile goal.
Oh, it, it's, it's happening. I mean, I honestly tell you, the market is, it's, it's crazy. Your house may be 24 hours in the market.
Great time to.
My book keep going on now.
Right time to really take this.
Oh, yes. Yes.
That's good.
Yes. Oh, yeah. I'm not a player.
You're also on the P&amp;D board now.
Yes.
So if there was a choice, which is your number one board?
Um.
How much more time do you have on P&amp;D?
Your term is up until September of '22.
Yeah, '22. Yeah. I love P&amp;D. I kind of grew to love P&amp;D. I think you can grow looking for it. But P&amp;D I would say for now, because I'm now in the other one. Just because of kind of how detailed it is and it kind of goes right into along the line of my career. Just, you know, seeing the growth and things like that. I have a hands-on experience with it in real estate and so.
And helping to control that growth in a doable way.
Yes.
Which is, I mean, you remember all the headaches with the townhomes.
Yes.
Out on 31st at 93.
Yes.
About in.
Yes.
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 You know exactly what I'm talking about. And the new ordinance is being designed there.
Yeah, and the, the control, I think, would be the, is, is always, how do you, how do you have that balance?
Right. And you hope you get that balance before the community's up in arms.
Yes, yes. And, and that's the, I think that's one thing that we're kind of, or have been tackling is finding that balance. Because you can put a million homes, but if it's not structured properly or if it doesn't have proper right of ways, it doesn't have proper things around it. You get to that point, just, you know, you lose the interest of the residence. People focus on the money aspect of it. So yeah, find that balance is key, I think. But to answer your question, I mean, I just love P&amp;D, so it's kind of, you know.
That's fine.
Yeah, as it is all it is, but getting on other things like more and more.
I appreciate your interest in being involved.
Oh, yes.
I'll be doing.
Oh, yeah, I love it. I love, I really do. I love the city. So while I'm here, I want to make sure I do my field just to try to help it make a difference.
Brian, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
Go sales, go sales.
Yeah, I know I am.
You too. Bye-bye.